We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Provo City Municipal Council Meeting, Tuesday, January 18th at 5:37 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are now being held in hybrid fashion. That is, members of the public can continue to view council meetings on YouTube and Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center. The coronavirus pandemic is not yet over. In case you hadn't heard, we encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated and to follow the protocols set by the CDC and our state and local health departments. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. I remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. In the chamber, we have council members Bill Fillmore, David Shipley, Travis Hoben, George Hanley, Catrice McKay, and online, we have council members Shannon Ellsworth and Rachel Whipple. We also are pleased to have Mayor Kafusi with us today, thank you, and many members of the public and staff, glad to have you all. The opening prayer tonight will be given by Counselor Rachel Whipple.
Our Father in Heaven, we give thee thanks through this day and the blessings that we enjoy. We're thankful that we're able to gather here together to exercise the responsibility to do the work of the city. We pray that we may be blessed with prudence and guidance, that we may look for the best interest and think long-term. Help us to have the courage to do what is right, to exercise compassion, and to, in all things, be considerate of the responsibility that we've been given. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you, Councilmember Whipple. The pledge of allegiance will be provided by Councilmember Shannon Ellsworth, and will please join her.
Shannon mentioned she was having some technical difficulties, so you might want to have someone else lead the pledge.
Please join in the pledge. My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill Fillmore, for filling in there. Item eight on tonight's agenda has been continued by the applicant, so if you were here to comment on that, you can go home. So, as indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken on this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. You will have two minutes to speak, and to assist the city recorder with the minutes, we ask those commenting in person to print your name on a slip of paper provided at the back of the room, behind Dixon there, and place it in the container near the podium. Online commentators should spell out their names before commenting, if that makes sense, hopefully. All right. Now we'll open up public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. Doesn't look like anyone in the chamber is interested in commenting on anything online. Do we have anything?
There's nobody in the attendees list, so there's no hands up at all.
All right, thank you. Okay. So now we'll move on to our first item on our agenda, which is a presentation on crosswalk safety for pedestrians and drivers presented by Provo City School District students from the Center for Advanced Professional Studies Program. This is presented by Dixon Holmes and Alexis Morgan, Olive Robinson, and Norvin Fieros Ortega. Are they here with us?
They are, just really quickly, Dixon Holmes in the mayor's office. This last semester, I had the opportunity to work with some wonderful students from the Provo School District through the Center of Advanced Professional Studies. And they approached the city, and we actually approached each other about an opportunity for a... An opportunity to work with the city to make some public awareness on some such. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Alexis Morgan, and she will give a brief presentation on what they did regarding pedestrian safety.
Great.
Thank you so much, Dixon, and thank you, council, that we can present to you guys. I have a PowerPoint that goes along with my presentation, that's something we pull up now.
So you have Provo High?
I go to Timview High School, I'm a senior.
Timview, okay, great. Staff, you're working on a presentation? Okay, just making sure.
I'll talk about my experience a little bit. CAPS is a new program, and I had the opportunity to take part in a local business, and that was with Provo City, but I have some classmates who worked with local businesses. And what we do is, we've worked for the past five months, almost about seven to eight hours every week, depending on the week. And what we'll do is, we'll meet with our clients. We will have different meetings about what we want to see from our client, but also about our deliverables and what we can do to benefit our client. But most importantly, it gives these high schoolers an opportunity to build their resumes. This way, we are able to have some real-world experience, where we are able to not only learn about how business works, or depending on the different strand we're in, because there's also like engineering strands or digital design strands. I was specifically in the business and marketing strand, so that's why I'm referencing this towards business. But we also get to see how the real world works, how we can work with our clients and have those opportunities, which is awesome. And so I'd like to thank my advisor, Jan Jardine, who gives us these opportunities to build our resumes as young high schoolers, and also the many who work hard to make CAPS, something that is an option for us.
So while we're still waiting, that was an awesome speech. My daughter's in CAPS, and trying to imagine her being as well-spoken as you were just now to describe that is amazing. I mean, that was awesome.
Seriously.
Blew my socks off, you're gonna go really far, that was awesome.
Thank you, Councilman Shipley, I appreciate that.
Alexis, we have the video and the two graphics, so if you just maybe give an overview of what your project was, and then we'll show the video and show the picture.
Sure.
Perfect, so I worked with two other students, it was a team of three with Brett and Dixon, and what we wanted to do is, we wanted to hit two target audiences. The first one that Provo City really wanted us to make sure that we teach how to be a good pedestrian is elementary schoolers. We wanted to make sure that they understand that they can't just run in front of a car, they have to use a sidewalk, but also that they know how to be observant of their surroundings and how to be a good pedestrian, basically. We wanted to teach them that if they're riding their bike, or if they're on a skateboard, to get off of those, or if they're listening to music in their AirPods or earbuds or something like that, then they know to take those out, and also more importantly, to look both ways and also make eye contact with drivers. And so that way, we're teaching these younger kids how to be good pedestrians, but we wanted to do so in a fun, interactive way. We know that younger audiences have short attention spans, and so what we did for them is, we made a 30-second video that they can watch, but that is footage from a game that we made. We made an interactive game that they can use, and the game itself teaches them how to be a good pedestrian. In that game, it works a little bit like Crossy Road or Frogger, if you guys have played that, there's a bunny that is the main character, and that bunny will hop around, and if it hops in the middle of the street, then unfortunately, it will be hit by cars. But what the young child is told to do, is they're told to find the crosswalks, that way they're not hit, and then they gain points by using those crosswalks. And over that, there is a voiceover of my voice that teaches them things that I told you guys, like take out your earbuds, you know, look both ways, make eye contact with the driver, wear reflective clothing or light clothing if possible, those type of items. And that way, the kid can actually learn how to be a good pedestrian in a fun way. And then our second audience that we are trying to target are more mature drivers. Specifically, with new laws that have come out, it's been tricky to know when to yield for pedestrians and when your ride away is. And so we made a video that not only taught them about the laws in a fun way, but we also wanted to humanize pedestrians. And in this video that you guys will watch in just a few moments, you'll see different community members holding a sign that says, "I'm not just a pedestrian, I'm a..." and then fill in the blank. And basically, what we're doing with that is, we want to humanize pedestrians. We want drivers to make sure that it's important to be cognizant of their surroundings, because these aren't just, you know, pedestrians or people crossing the crosswalk. These are community members that have an important life, they're meaningful to others and their families, and they are valued community members.
Hey, stop! I'm not just a pedestrian, I'm a mother!
I'm not just a pedestrian, I'm a student!
I'm not just a pedestrian, I'm a teacher!
I'm not just a pedestrian, I'm an entrepreneur!
I'm not just a pedestrian, I'm a firefighter!
Get in the pedestrian habit and stay alert in intersections, school zones, crosswalks, and busy community centers. When approaching or turning into a crosswalk, stop before the white line and proceed when the roadway is clear. If the lane next to you is stopped, stop as well and check for pedestrians before proceeding. Focus on the road and surrounding areas where pedestrians may be. And remember that careful driving is safe driving. Never drive distracted and always stay in speed limits when pedestrians could be nearby. At 20 miles per hour, nine out of 10 pedestrians survive a crash. At 30 miles per hour, five out of 10 pedestrians survive a crash. And at 40 miles per hour, only one out of 10 pedestrians survive a crash.
Drivers, be alert and watch for pedestrians. Pedestrians, be alert and use crosswalks and crossing signals whenever available. Let's all do our part for pedestrian safety.
We're all more than pedestrians. Whether walking or driving, stay alert and get the pedestrian habit.
So that's our two-minute video that I was able to help film, and I also wrote the script for, and that was fun to take part in, and it was also fun to help create some infographics that we have with those as well. So we made two infographics. If you want to try pulling those up, that'd be awesome, thank you so much. And this first infographic that you see is targeted towards the more mature audience. I think a lot of people, you know, in their heads when they're driving, maybe you're listening to music, or you're thinking about what's for dinner, who I need to text next, or am I late to my next location? You know, we're not really looking around for pedestrians, but something that I found that was interesting, talking to Sergeant Orgill of Provo Police and also researching with UDOT, was how low the speed is, but how high the chance of death is of a pedestrian is hit. 30 miles per hour is not that fast, yet only 50% of pedestrians will survive. And so that's something for drivers to be aware of, considering their speed. And then the next infographic was the one that we targeted towards our younger individuals. Basically, this infographic is in the same style as the game of Crossy Road, fun, kind of vintage animated style. And here, the kids can play along, so they can read, "Are you at an intersection?", and they can answer themselves, and they want to follow around the green, and if they answer no, then they're going to learn how to fix it. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the logo that we created. We spent a long time on that, as well as our slogan, that is, "Get the pedestrian habit." We wanted something that was simple and would stick in your head, but also something that would appeal to both sides, drivers as well as pedestrians, because it takes both of us, it's a two-way street, no pun intended. And when we work together, we can create a better and safer Provo.
Thank you, Alexis, any questions or comments for Alexis? Go ahead.
That was awesome, thank you so much, and I'm proud, I just can't wait to see what you do, and I love it that you're getting so young to see coming and be involved in a city meeting.
Thank you so much, that means a lot.
Careful, you get the bug, you'll be watching these online every Tuesday night.
You know, I already am, I'm taking notes, too.
I was gonna say, you don't know this, you don't know this young woman, she has apparently nothing better to do on Tuesdays, but she watches our meetings.
You guys are too exciting, how can I miss it? Okay, thank you so much.
You look good in that orange vest, we could use that Westridge every morning about 8:30.
First of all, I'm so awkward, and I just get so, you were so good, and you're just like, "It'll be short, and we'll tell you what to say", so it was a, thanks for asking me to help, and I hope I didn't ruin the video.
You were awesome, we really appreciate you being part of it.
Well, thank you, Alexis, we appreciate the effort you put into this and coming here to present, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
At this time, if there's no objection, we will now adjourn, recess the Provo Municipal Council meeting and reconvene as the Redevelopment Agency of Provo by unanimous consent. Okay. Chair Ellsworth?
I'll take it from here, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This commences the meeting of the Provo City RDA Board, and we will consider a resolution appropriating $442,099 something, I didn't catch the end of that. Oh, there it is, $974 in tax increment fund for the Redevelopment Agency for a post-performance payment related to parks and PAC fees for City View Apartments. Presenting will be... I'm sorry, I'm not there in person, who's going to present this?
David Walter.
Oh, thank you, David Walter.
Director of Redevelopment, welcome, David.
Chair Ellsworth, members of the board, good evening. This item before you, by way of background, in August of 2016, the Redevelopment Agency entered into an agreement with PEG Development the Redevelopment Agency entered into an agreement with PEG Development to use the tax increment that would be generated by the construction of their project that um 300 South and University Avenue, known as City View Apartments, to pay the city impact fees. Right now, there is a small remnant piece that was left when uh the state came through and improved 300 South. It's about point two tenths of an acre. And the Parks and Rec Department has plans to improve that and make it a public space. And they are looking to have their impact fees paid a little bit in advance of the agreement. And this is the item before you tonight. It's appropriating $400,000 of tax increment financing funds from the Tax Increment Fund in the Redevelopment Agency and moving that into the Parks and Rec Impact Fee project area. Or fund, rather, I'm sorry. Uh, it also authorizes the Chief Executive Officer of the Agency to sign any appropriate paperwork necessary to effectuate this transaction. So happy to answer any questions. So just as a point of reference, this is for the 200 City View 200 Apartments, which are currently already built that are right there on University Avenue and 300 South, not the ones that are under construction um behind the Hilton Hotel.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Council membership Lee, I'll field, I'll field the questions in here for you. How about that, Chair?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. So just, just, we asked last time whether or not this would be a public amenity versus a private amenity. You know, that space, we just want to make sure it's open.
It is open. It's the, the parcel is owned by the uh, the city.
Okay.
And so this is to, to put in some public amenities, statues and to spruce it up instead of just having a.
It's not going to be gated off or closed off. Okay, sir. Thank you. I have a question for Chair Ellsworth. As RDA Chair, do you have any comments or concerns or anything that you'd like to comment about?
Um, I haven't, this has not come to the RDA Executive Committee prior to this meeting. So I'm, I'm uh new to it, just like anybody else. But this is, these are funds that were uh committed at the outset of this project.
Okay. I don't, oh, go ahead, Mr. Fillmore.
Mr. Walter, you don't by any chance have a sketch or a schematic or drawing?
I, I do not. No, sir.
Do you know what it includes by way of amenities or how large it is?
They've got some public art and other things that they're going to be putting in that space.
So grass, park benches?
I don't think it's grass. I think it's going to be benches, some artwork. I don't believe it's going to be grass.
That's all the questions. Chair Ellsworth.
Thank you. Um, is there any public comment? For this item?
There are no hands raised in the attendees list.
Doesn't appear to be any in, in the chamber.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I think we can move forward to the implied motion and take a vote. All those in favor? Uh, help me out here.
Un- unanimous in the chamber.
Okay. Counselor Whipple?
I'm in favor.
And I will vote in favor as well. So the vote is unanimous. And that, I believe, concludes the business of the RDA Board at this time.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will now, um. Uh. Yeah, we will now adjourn the Redevelopment Agency of Provo Governing Board and reconvene as the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent. All right, no objections there. Um. Our first item on the action agenda is a resolution consenting to the appointment of individuals to various boards and commissions. This will be presented by Mayor Michelle Kofusi. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair Hoben. Um, I am recommending the following appointments to Provo City Boards and Commissions as indicated below and submit them herewith for the council advice and consent. We're going to start with the Airport Board. It's Mario Marquitas. I am recommending Mario be reappointed to a three year term on the Airport Board, ending December 31st, 2024. The next board is the Energy Board. And I am recommending Erin Hernandez. Erin has been involved with Provo Power for the past eight years. And she owns a local business in Provo. I am recommending Erin be appointed to a four year term on the Energy Board, ending December 31st, 2025. Um, and then Julie Rash. Julie has served eight years on the Provo City School District Board of Education, where she gained invaluable policymaking, budgeting, and administrative oversight experience. I'm recommending Julie be appointed to a four year term on the Energy Board, ending December 31st, 2025. And then our final Energy Board member is Carolyn Jardine. Carolyn has been working in marketing and operational roles in software companies, where she's managed large teams, cross functional initiatives, and is known as an effective coalition builder to drive for positive outcomes. I am recommending Carolyn be appointed to a four year term on the Energy Board, ending December 31st, 2025. And then on to our Parks and Recreation Board. I am recommending Laura Cabanella. Laura is a former member of the Provo City Council and has served as a board member for the Provo Farmers Market and the Ice Sheet Authority. I am recommending Laura be appointed to a three year term on the Parks and Rec Recreation Board, ending December 31st, 2024. And let me just give a little backing on some of the dates I was a little worried about. So when we do our boards and commissions, we try and stagger them so the whole board doesn't go off at one time. And so some of these appointments are staggered. Others are appointed just to fill for a year because someone's had to leave unexpectedly. But most boards in um the city are three years. That's what they usually are. The anomaly is the Energy Board, which we've put a lot of people on tonight. So Bonnie Morrow is a neighborhood chair and has been actively involved with the community and Parks and Recreation. I am recommending Bonnie be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Board, ending December 31st, 2022. So she's one of those unique appointments and she will have, will have the option to reappoint her after this year. And then Doug Gardner. Doug has served as a neighborhood chair and taught at UVU. He has also served on the Westridge Community Council. I'm recommending Doug be appointed to a three year term on the Parks and Recreation Board, ending December 31st, 2024. And now our Transportation and Mobility Committee, Greg McFarland. Greg is a Provo native and is a transportation engineering professor at BYU. Prior to teaching, Greg developed models for the public sector in Oregon, Virginia, and North Carolina. I am recommending Greg be appointed to a three year term on the Transportation and Mobility Committee, ending December 31st, 2024. And the final board is um a Building Inspection Board of Appeals. I am recommending Mark Greenwood and I'm recommending Mark be reappointed to a four year term on the Building Inspection Board of Appeals, ending December 31st, 2025. That was a lot, so thank you.
All right. So thank you, Mayor. Um. We'll call for a vote on the implied motion. Uh, actually, is there any council discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote in the applied motion. All in favor? Um. Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Mrs. Whipple?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. Okay. Our next item is an applied motion on a presentation of the Popular Annual Financial Report by the Provo City Finance Division. This will be presented by John Borget, Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Chair Hoben and the Honorable Council. Um, I'm excited to share with you and the residents of Provo and those that may be listening, uh, talk about our, what we call our Popular Annual Financial Report. Uh, it's it's something that I get excited about because our comprehensive annual financial report, which we brought to the council and to the residents in December, is a complete report that uh has a lot of valuable information. And for many, it might be too much information because it's a little hard to, particularly if you don't have an accounting background. Uh, this report pulls information out of that report and provides it in a simple way with graphs and tables. And, and the goal is to make it more meaningful to, to all. And so we're excited about this. I'm just going to kind of walk you through a few sections. The goal is not to go through the whole thing. I would just mention that this report is available uh on the city's website, provo.org. If you go into the Finance Department and then you go into Finance Reports, and then the Popular Report is there for this year as well as previous years. And as you'll, as you see, as I walk through it, you'll be able to kind of get a feel for it. So if we could turn to page one. I've highlighted just some sections that I want to touch on. First of all, as I mentioned, the purpose of the and it's, it, that us accountants like to abbreviate or use acronyms for things. Uh, but um PAFR is an abbreviation for Popular Annual Financial Report. It says, "The purpose of the PAFR is to illustrate the city's financial information in a clear, concise manner, uh, giving all readers, both financial and non-financial, the understanding of where revenues come from and where dollars are being spent." Uh, now in the next paragraph, "The PAFR summarizes financial activities of the city and is drawn a more detailed report called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report." Next paragraph, "Although the numbers used in the PAFR come from audited sources, we have prevented them in a condensed, easy to understand, non-GAAP format." And then in the next paragraph, it says, "Provo has received uh, the Governmental Financial Officers Association Award for the last year's PAFR, which include, indicates the city's commitment to provide a report to residents that is easy to understand and give an overview of the city's finances." And so this association that we belong to, they review this report and they try to critique it and see if we're providing the essential financial information, providing in an easy way to understand. And we've had this report reviewed for over years and we, we continue to make changes and modifications. But I will say that this report scores very highly and uh we've had really good, good feedback on the information that we're providing. If you go to page three, which is a couple of pages back, um. At a glance, we just talked about some significant events. Uh, we're going to touch on, on three of them. We talked about the completion of the Tempano Gus Golf Club. Uh, the new city hall that's under construction that's anticipated to be open in June of '22, and then also the airport, new airport terminal of 2022. Exciting things that are happening. Also over on the right with top rankings, uh, Provo's been rated number one as best performing city. And then also number one as the safest big city in, in, in Utah. And we're excited about that. If you go over to page seven, skip a few pages. Um, this shows some tables and graphs and some interesting things. Uh, down below, it says, "As shown in the graphs above, both the governmental and business type activities show trends of steady or increasing revenues." And I really feel like an important indication of the health of the city and where we're going long term is seeing those positive trends. Uh, and it's kind of amazing in light of the pandemic and other challenges. Overall, we continue to see positive trends. And also expenditures have been consistently lower than revenues for both governmental and business type activities. And so we always like to have uh inflows exceed our outflows. And so that's positive. If you go over to page eight, uh, there's a, a table that shows general fund revenues and transfers in. And I think it's significant to note on the left, the sales tax is the number one source of revenue for the city or for the, for the, uh, I would say for the general fund. And also a couple of other significant sources in the general fund are transfers from other funds, primarily our enterprise funds, and also charges for service, for example, like parks and rec fees and Cubby Center fees and just the different services that we provide. Uh, down below, there's a pie graph that just kind of shows uh the makeup of those revenues. And it's kind of easier to see. You can see the big blue area that's 30% represents sales tax. Uh, the transfers uh are the orange, kind of up on the top right at 18%. And then the charges for services uh is the blue at 13%. If you combine those, roughly 62, those three areas make up 62% of the general fund. If we slip over to page nine, uh, just outlining uh our overall expenditures. And you can see that police is the largest expenditure in the general fund. Uh, that's to no surprise. I think our residents, one of their number one priorities is to feel safe and to be protected. And so that's where we spend a significant amount of our money. You can also see Parks and Rec and our fire department, as well as general services, which represent kind of the general areas in the general fund, such as, such as finance and minute uh HR, administrative services, uh, in the mayor's office and whatnot. Down below, uh, you can also see in a, in a similar type pie chart that we looked at before, the big piece down at the bottom in the dark blue representing the police department, which is the biggest area where funds are spent. If you go to page 10, uh, we talked a little bit about fund balance. Uh, once again, fund balance is the difference between general fund assets and liabilities. It's the net worth of the city. And once again, you can see a real nice positive trend there. Uh, 2021 is a big jump from 2020. And that's primarily from a strong year with sales tax revenue. Uh, we did mention in a meeting, uh, when we presented our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that since 2021 and 2022, we've had some important appropriations that have taken place that have moved that down some, but it's still at a very nice positive trend. Uh, and then you can also see as a percentage wise, uh, that the percentages are continuing to increase similarly. So I really think this page right here is one of the most important pages uh in our Popular Annual Financial Report because it really indicates um the uh overall net worth of the general fund. And I think it also indicates that both the council and administration uh is managing the city well as we continue to increase in our financial health. You go over to page 12. Uh, this talks a little bit about property taxes and it's something that's not everybody understands very well. And I think this is very helpful. Up on the right, this kind of gives a breakdown of the different components that make, make up property tax. And this is for a $300,000 home. We've highlighted that Provo actually is shown in three areas. Uh, we have our library operating fund and that's to help operate the library. We have our general fund portion. And then we have the Provo Debt Service Fund, which represents our bonds for the rec center as well as the bonds for the new city hall and the fire station that's currently uh is open. But the fire, the city hall is in construction. Um, between the three, between these three funds, as you look over on the left, Provo City received roughly 21.3% of the overall tax burden, if you combine those. And so that's, that's important to understand and uh I think it's really helpful for the residents and readers to see that. Um, if you flip over to page 13. Uh, this talks a little about our enterprise funds. And the thing that I think is significant and important to understand is just the size and scope of energy. Uh, you can see how much larger in dollars uh it is versus water, wastewater, airport. They're all essential services, but airport, but the energy fund is a big part of, of uh, of our enterprise funds. And just energy dollars cost a lot and there's a lot of effort that goes into supporting them. And then down below is the expenses and transfers out. Once again, you can see energy being a large source. Well, the largest expenditures in energy, I would say though, is uh basically purchase power. And as most, I'm sure as you're all aware, we purchase at UMPA. And we're very involved with the UMPA operation as well. Uh, flip over to page 14. This is a listing of our debt. Uh, you can see there's a breakdown. Uh, roughly, we have 182 million at the end of the year. Uh, the biggest piece of that is our general obligation bonds, which we talked about. I just talked about a minute ago, which is our rec center bonds and our um city hall bonds. And you can see. And you can see that they decreased. So our annual debt payment, we went from 99 million at the first of the year to 94 million at the end. Another significant, significant item on there is you'll notice that in the wastewater revenue bonds, they increased by about 15, about 15 million. And that's what those, that's draws from our loan through the state for the built, the building and construction of the water treatment plant. We actually have about $77 million that we're going to use. Three of those million, you don't have to pay back. But as we draw each year until we get up to that maximum, you'll see that increase right there. And then you can all see, also see for comparison purposes, where we've been over the last five years in total debt, as well as each of these obligations. And in 2019, you see a big increase with the general obligation bonds. And that is when we issued the bonds for the new city hall and our fire station on Canyon Road. On, and that kind of covers the items that I was just going to highlight just to give the residents and the council a, just a little taste of the report. I would encourage all to, to go through and just kind of do a review. It's really a pretty quick read and it does a really good job of just giving you an overall view of the finances for the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Borgan. Any questions?
Okay. Borgan, it looks like all the trends are good. What do you worry about?
Well, it's, it's interesting that you would ask because we just had a meeting with the mayor today talking about the, our upcoming budget. And it's going to be a challenging budget year. One of the primary reasons is the numbers that we just received, the national numbers that we received were inflation was roughly 7% in the past year. We haven't seen those kind of inflation rates for a long, long time. And it's just, it can affect everything, you know, it can affect your operating budget for buying materials and supplies. It can affect CIP projects for the cost for infrastructure and whatnot. It affects payroll, which is one of the biggest expenses that we have in the city. And we always want to try to remain competitive. We want to, we want to look at all those issues. And as we're starting the budget process and we'll be meeting with the council and on a regular basis, that's what I'm worried about right now. But we're ahead of it. We're, we had a real productive meeting with the mayor and we're going to come back with ideas and options. But it's going to be challenging just with, with things increasing. As you're aware, we, with our police department, in order to want to be able to be competitive and attract police officers, we made a substantial increase in their compensation, which I totally support. But it's just going to create some challenges. And so we're on it, we're facing it directly. But that's, that's one of the biggest things I'm worried about right now.
Anything else of significance?
Nothing that really comes to mind. I mean, we, we have a number of, you know, we're, with our software system that we're using, we're trying to work on enhancements and continue to be able to utilize it the way that we anticipated when we, when we purchased it. I think we're always concerned about attracting and retaining good talent. But those are the things that come to mind right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Doesn't appear to be any more questions. We'll go ahead and, thank you, John. We'll open this item up for public comment. I guess I should have warned people in advance to go ahead and, and call in or get ready to comment if they wanted to. No comment in the chamber. Cliff, it doesn't seem to be any comment online?
No, there's one person there and his, his thing is not up at this point.
Okay. Well, so much for being a popular annual report. We'll bring it back for council discussion. Is there any discussion?
I'll, I'll say something, so it seems more popular. If I may. Like Mr. Borgan mentioned, I think the page about our general fund, obviously, and, and just the balance of, of, you know, the unassigned balance going up by as much as it did last year is phenomenal. And does speak, that trend line on the general fund, the fund balance, excuse me, does speak to how conservative, you know, our, our, the finance department of the city manages and how conservative the mayor and her staff have been with expenses. And I just applaud both of those things, obviously. It gives us more flexibility. The issue of inflation is catching, I'm sure, a lot of cities off guard. It's catching us a little bit. I mean, it, it's hard to plan for something as dramatic as that. But we'll be able to handle that challenge a lot better than most cities because of how well managed we are, and I appreciate that.
Amen.
I guess staff, we're not voting on anything on this, are we? Okay.
No need, it's just for information.
Well, it's an implied motion, so, all right. Moving on. This one is something we're going to vote on. A resolution appropriating $37,050 in the Economic Development Division in the general fund for a sales tax, tax increment post-performance payment to Parkway Village. That's a lot of Ps. This will be presented by Keith Murray, Development Services. Welcome back, Keith.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to be able to meet with you guys, ladies. So we talked a little bit earlier today about one of these. We have, I think, four of these tax reimbursement agreements. This one is for the Parkway Village. We talked about this in your work session a couple of weeks ago. And so now it's just time to appropriate the funds that we talked about. Just for a refresher, Parkway Village made the agreement with us in 2016 and agreed to spend 2.1, a little over 2.1 million dollars to reinvest in that area. And we agreed that if they would do that, that we would share back a portion of the increase over their base amount. And this year, they have exceeded that base amount, which means, you know, their improvements have made a difference, which is the reason why we do these. And the reimbursement that they're due this year is $37,050. So if you don't have any other questions, I'd ask the council support to show our support for them and approve this appropriation.
Just to ask a quick question, which year, what year are we at on, on this particular one?
I can tell you that exactly. This is the third payment, so we've made two. So this is the third one.
Okay.
And does it? So far, the total received, including this year, will be $76,725.
Does this have a year cap?
It does. This one, I think, is a 10-year agreement as well. I'm sorry, I should have known that off the top of my head.
I think you mentioned it in our work meeting when we discussed it a few weeks ago, but I just am trying to keep them all straight.
10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's pretty consistent with what we've done in the others.
Okay.
Doesn't appear to be any more questions, so we'll go ahead and we, thank you, Keith. We will go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone in the chamber, okay?
No hands up online.
No hands up online. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and if there's any council discussion. Doesn't appear to be so. Then I guess we'll go ahead and make a motion to, or we'll go ahead and vote on the implied motion. All in favor? Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Mrs. Whipple?
Yes.
Thank you. That vote is unanimous. Moving right along. A resolution of the municipal council urging sustained and increased support in the annual state budget allocated to the Luray McAllister Fund for the preservation of farms and open land in the state of Utah. Presented by councilors Handley and Ellsworth.
All right, I, I didn't know if Mr. Jarvis was going to be here this evening, but we discussed this at our last meeting. This was a previous joint resolution that was passed by the city council and the mayor. I think it was early in my first term on the council, so about three or four years ago. And we talked about, just to remind everybody, that this is a state fund that is designated for assisting with the acquisition of conservation easements for private property owners of agricultural lands so that they will be able to preserve the land as agricultural, while being able to reap some of the benefits that they would otherwise gain by developing it. So that the lands are put into perpetual conservation. And there are three parcels currently in Provo that are in discussion with the Agricultural Commission and with the Nature Conservancy about a possible conservation easement on those properties. So there's actually a pretty immediate interest and need in using these funds that have, over the course of time, varied in the funding levels that the state has given to the fund. So our resolution is simply intended to send a message to the state legislature that we value these funds, that we intend to use them, and we're grateful for them and would encourage generous funding for the purposes of helping us to preserve open space and agriculture in Provo. Ms. Ellsworth, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
I will add a couple of notes here. I think that this resolution is worthwhile. I think that the Luray McAllister Fund is worthwhile. It's administered by the Quality Growth Commission, which I serve on. And just by the name, you can understand the intent.
I don't know what you mean by Siri.
That was Siri. Just by the name of the commission, you can understand the intent of the commission, which is to promote quality growth. And, and I think that's something that we've all been grappling with, especially around some of these parcels on the West Side. And so not only would Provo benefit from expansion or maintenance of the Luray McAllister Fund, but the whole Valley would and the whole state does. We've considered parcels all over Cache Valley, Box Elder County, and Davis County, here in Utah Valley, and then also parcels just outside of Zion National Park and, and some really remarkable places in Washington County. And so this has a statewide impact. I, I will say, though, that there is a bill being considered that would end the Quality Growth Commission and eliminate the Luray McAllister Fund. So if it makes anyone here nervous that we could be showing support for, well, for a program and a fund that is on the chopping block, yeah, that's a discussion we could have as well. And I don't know all the details about that bill, but I, I can do some more work if, if folks want more answers.
All right, thank you both for that presentation. I do have a question. Ms. Ellsworth, the, I mean, what, why would somebody want to end this? The way I see it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, somebody else puts up money to help farmers basically cash out on their property, but still preserve it as, as like agricultural land and open space. Why is that bad?
It's, it's not bad. And this is not the only avenue for a farmer or rancher or property owner who wants to bring some funding for, for a conservation easement. So it's, it's not bad. But there are other avenues to fund this, right? So usually, the Luray McAllister Fund is a fraction of the overall cost to purchase the conservation easement. And so it's used as a matching fund or as a kind of a token to show that the state is, has some skin in the game. And so it's usually leveraged with two or three other funding sources. Why a legislator wants to get rid of it, I don't know. I don't know their intent. I haven't spoken with this representative. It's a program that's fairly old, I guess. I mean, it's probably 20 or 30 years old, probably 30 years old. And there's new legislators now and they have new ideas and there's different places to use money. And they, they've reshaped a number of things at the state over the last couple of years. So I honestly can't speak to the intent. And maybe they want to create something bigger and better for conservation easements. What I do understand is that the representative who's running the legislation is a full-time farmer. So I, I imagine they just want a different sort of program. But that's speculation.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Mrs. Whipple, go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if on the, the bill, do you, can you tell me the bill number or anything so I can look it up?
I'll have to go back to my email and check the bill number.
Okay.
I can, I can distribute that later.
If we went ahead and, and went with this resolution now, would that be an implied support for keeping the fund and rejection of that proposed bill?
I don't know if it's a rejection of the bill, but it certainly, it certainly shows support for the fund. Right? And I, I don't think that we would be putting ourselves in a bad position necessarily with that legislator. This isn't, I mean, this is kind of new information, right? Bills aren't released far in advance. This, I think, was prepared before that bill was. So I think it's really easy to go to the legislature with a past resolution and say, hey, we've had good success with the Luray McAllister Fund and we support it. And, and just create a conversation about what, what they're trying to do. I can look up the bill number real quick if people need that in this meeting.
I would just ask Ms. Ellsworth or Mr. Handley if we know who that legislator is. Is he a Utah County representative?
Uh, no. I believe it's Representative Ferry. Let me check here. Let me check.
I know a couple misunderstandings with the fund here is that a lot of people don't understand that the farmers retain the land. We're just, they're just selling the development rights. And so the land does stay with the farmers. I know that some people don't understand that. And they don't like the idea that, oh, the government's buying up the land. But it does stay with the farmer and it stays with the citizens. And I think that's a, so it's like a win-win on both ends.
Yeah, and as Ms. Ellsworth mentioned, it's actually a pretty small portion. I mean, the idea is that it's sort of a collaborative funding mechanism. And so it works as a catalyst for other kinds of funding opportunities. So the, the percentage that would come from the state funds to any particular property would be relatively small.
So one thing I'll add to the conversation is just in reading the first page of the draft of this bill, and I, I'm not even seeing a number on this bill. I'll, I'll do some more digging tomorrow, but it looks like they're restructuring a couple of divisions within the state. And so that makes sense that they would be also restructuring some of the programs within those divisions. So this proposal is to change the name of the Division of Recreation to the Division of Outdoor Recreation and Conservation and merges the Office of Outdoor Recreation into the Division of Outdoor Recreation and Conservation. And so that's kind of the headline for that bill. But it also says repeals the Quality Growth Commission and replaces the commission with the Land Conservation Board, including moving the board within the Department of Natural Resources and addressing the board's powers and duties. So, yeah, high level, that's what they're up to. It would replace the Quality Growth Commission with the Land Conservation Board. And hopefully that Land Conservation Board, if I read the other 106 pages, would provide a similar benefit as a Luray McAllister Fund and the Quality Growth Commission.
Doesn't seem that, in, in
Doesn't seem that in in either case, it's going to change um the intent of what we're passing here. Um I I know from the past resolution, Mr. Jarvis has indicated that that was very helpful. I think it's valuable for us to um make sure this is on our legislators' radar and that they're thinking about this. This is one of our priorities. So I'm I'm comfortable moving ahead, especially since it's not at all clear yet what what's going to happen.
Um hey, I'm sorry. I should have read more of this bill beforehand. I'm reading now in the bill that it says the Lee Ray McAllister Critical Land Conservation Program uh would be created in in this new office. So it looks like they're repurposing the Lee Ray McAllister Fund under the Critical Land Conservation Program. Um sorry to be learning on the fly with you. This is all an evolving situation. Today is the first day of the legislative session.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and um we'll open this item up for public comment. Anyone online? Staff?
There is not. Nailed it anyway.
Bring back to the council for any additional discussion.
Yeah, I'll just say that uh I was on a tour with Ms. Ellsworth on the west side with these parcels. And they're beautiful parcels of property. They jet right up to the lake. They're right next to the the June sucker Restoration Project. It's a perfect spot for agriculture. And if I if I may, and this might be a little bit out of turn because I haven't spoken with Mr. Miller recently, but when in conversations past with Sean Miller, who heads our Agricultural Commission here for the for the city, um one of his, one of one of the main priorities for him in in supporting this particular group is is yes, it's an important piece of a puzzle of different funding mechanisms that exist. But also, for the sake of Provo, it's important for, you know, these 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 parcels that are are historically very uh productive pieces of property from an agricultural standpoint. Um I know a a key concern for him is that if we get rid of all that productive agricultural land, at some point, we have a food security problem for the county and for the surrounding area. And so there's there's more than just the beauty and the aesthetic for Provo. I mean, there's a real issue of preserving agricultural land for the sake of agriculture, for the sake of food security uh and for the sake of our community. And so uh I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I but I've heard him talk about that in the past, and I think it's a very important objective for him as well as that. So these are beautiful pieces of property. I'd love to see him stay, um you know, farming pieces. And I think this fund is, among other things, is is a big, is an important part of the puzzle.
Uh go ahead, Mr. Hanley.
Um yeah, this is drafted, am I correct, as a joint resolution? Um so I just wanted to make sure we invite the mayor if she'd like to make a comment.
Yes, I'm planning to sign it. I've signed it every year since George and I jumped on the city leadership together. So yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Um yeah, so after skimming that legislation, I feel good about um I don't feel like we are conflicting with the legislators' intent. And maybe that bill passes, maybe it doesn't. Let's assume it does. I still feel like the the bill protects the Lee Ray McAllister Fund and the intent of the Lee Ray McAllister Fund. Um and that's really what we're doing is supporting that. And so um if anything, I think we would be fairly aligned with that legislator. Um the only issue is would we want to remove reference to the Utah Quality Growth Commission? Uh I mean, it's not material to this resolution, but it's a consideration you may want to think about. I think it's only mentioned once here, so it's it's probably immaterial.
I'm looking for it. Where is it mentioned?
At the bottom.
After the where.
Thirty-nine. Just says as administered by the Utah Quality Growth Commission for the preservation.
I think that's, yeah, irrelevant. I mean, it's either way, not going to make a difference with the intent at least. Okay, um thank you. Ms. Ellsworth, um any other discussion or motions? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the implied motion then. All in favor? Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Mrs. Whipple?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. All right. Some of you are still awake out there. Our next item is an ordinance. An ordinance amending Provo City Code to adopt policies and procedures for the dedication of private streets and utility citywide application. Um any members of the public that would like to give a comment for this item are encouraged to call in or sign in now. And this will be presented by Aaron Ardmore? No, Bill Pepperoni?
Aaron's gone home for the evening, so I'll cover this. So the council has discussed this on a couple other occasions. This ordinance is about establishing process and uh criteria by which uh private homeowners associations can ask the city or petition the city to take over private infrastructure. Um this isn't applying to any specific property. It's simply setting up the ordinance so that people could apply for that. That's all I have. I'll just answer questions that you may have.
Questions from the council? Uh questions first and then.
I just I just asked Mr. Pepperoni to, I I think we've talked in in meetings past about, is this sufficiently strict but still has the ability to consider for reasons of safety and otherwise, you know, uh uh an acceptance of of utilities. And I I'd just love to hear your feedback in in this meeting on on that question.
Yeah, I feel like it is. We have certainly taken input from the public and we have made some changes to this document with those suggestions or comments in mind. No, we have not made all of the specific changes that have been suggested or requested, but I feel like this gives sufficient um flexibility for the city uh CRC Executive Committee to consider a wide range of situations and applications. And yet I like how it's not mandatory, it's discretionary on behalf of that committee. Um so I feel like it has accomplished both of those purposes. I'm comfortable with it as it is written now.
Okay. Thank you.
If I understand correctly from our work session, the uh the the consideration for taxes having been paid, but not necessarily a direct benefit to an HOA, if I understand correctly what I heard, the amount is negligible.
Yes, sir. The analysis that our finance department did along with our city engineer compared that to BNC Road Funds and how those funds are spent and the annual allotments, uh it seemed to be insignificant. That that seemed to be an insignificant consideration.
Okay. Next question. We've had some discussion about another ordinance in the city code uh which falls into the engineering department uh with respect to some discretionary element on their part, which might potentially soften the impact of this ordinance. Uh could you just explain that a little bit further, how that works and how it would relate to this and whether or not we need to specifically reference that ordinance in this ordinance?
So that ordinance gives the engineering department some discretion in the design of road cross-sections in hillside areas, which this certainly is a hillside area, to tailor a road cross-section to the environment more sensitively than just our standard subdivision roads. Because the wider your roads in hillside areas, the more cuts and fills you have, the more environmental impact you have. I I think that's a very useful provision in our code. But I think under the language of this ordinance, as we've crafted it, the HOA that seems most interested in this app in this ordinance, I'm not sure we would even need to invoke or use that other code section. I think under the language of this code, as it sits before you, uh could solve the their problem, their situation um just fine. To me, that particular situation, the biggest question hanging out there is water meter hookups. And that's something they'll have to wrestle with as this, if they choose to move forward under this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I've gotten some questions from citizens about um about, and I think you kind of alluded to this earlier, but they were concerned about the CRC may approve this instead of the CRC will approve this. And I think there's some discretion that the CRC is looking for. Can you explain that?
Yeah, that's one of the debates that went on several weeks ago. Uh some language was suggested that would make it more mandatory that the CRC Executive Group would have to uh approve a request uh under this ordinance. And as the staff met and discussed that, we felt like uh the city having discretion uh in that regard would be very valuable to the city. We tried to write this ordinance so that it would not be extremely exclusive. Um but we have wanted to maintain that discretion on the part of the CRC Executive Group that would make these recommendations or or make these decisions.
Okay. And even though it says may uh like may approve, uh there is still an appeal process beyond that, right?
Yes.
And then uh again, a citizen was concerned about uh private infrastructure meeting current standards. Can you just provide some context there?
Well, yeah, that was why we made one of the most recent changes to the ordinance that we did. Um in many of these cases, the roads will be many years old and won't be current standards. Um I think this ordinance says that a road doesn't have to meet, the cross-section doesn't have to meet today's standard to be accepted. The CRC group could approve a request even if it doesn't meet today's standard.
Gotcha. So just to clarify, there's uh certainly cases where the flexibility or autonomy of the CRC group could benefit citizens and not just inhibit uh
Yes.
this kind of
Yeah.
proposal.
This is a very complicated situation in that for the last thirty years or so, the city engineering's position has been if you're going to build a private road, it has to be built to public standards just in case this happens. Uh we have roads older than that, though, in the city. And we have public roads in the city that have been public since they were built that have no sidewalks. Indian Hills, great example of that, right? So we have a wide range of what's public and what's private and what's what the cross-section is of each of those. Um so I think it's important for this group to be able to look at other roads that were approved at the same time. Did those have sidewalks or not? What width were those? And all of that will be taken into consideration by the CRC group.
Okay. Thank you.
Um Mr. Pepperoni, thank you. I is my question is uh kind of a theoretical one. It really um it's just occurred to me that I could imagine scenarios in which uh a particular road or a particular neighborhood that's private is actually um more of a public safety hazard to the city remaining private than if we incorporated it. And so uh, you know, but I could imagine, of course, that for that very reason, it's not meeting a lot of the standards that we would want it to meet. Um so I'm just curious if this uh addresses that kind of need. I mean, it it seems to me that um we would very mu- there there could be a scenario in which we would say, you know, we're more likely to have, I don't know, a mudslide or a fire or something if this is not under city jurisdiction, but we don't necessarily, we in in such a case, maybe, I mean, I know that we have a little mechanism in there where the applicant could come to the city council and ask for appropriation or something, but I mean, what would be the mechanism to?
Well, I'll let, I'll introduce what I think is the right answer, then I'll turn the time over to our city engineer. But my understanding is if it looks like the city is going to have to have an outlay of money to upgrade the facility or infrastructure, the city would probably turn to that that HOA and say, if you want us to seriously consider this, these are the steps you're going to have to take to bring things up to a higher standard than it is right now, and then we would consider taking those over. Because I think there's going to be some real skepticism and some real hesitation on the city's part to expend public funds to fix those specific situations. Um in terms of uh natural hazards and those kinds of things, I'm not exactly sure what you mean. But I'll have uh Mr. Haight, who is our city engineer, and we'll deal with this directly, also answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, um I'll try to make sure I understand it correctly is um if a road is going to pose a safety hazard if it stays in private hands because they're not maintaining it properly or and you couldn't get fire trucks or something like that, is that what you're kind of addressing?
Yeah, I mean, because it ends up being a safety hazard for the community, right? Private or public, it could affect lots of people and it could affect our our resources um leaving it as is. So maybe there would be scenarios where it's in our interest to incorporate and improve something to make it more safe.
I think, so here's how I'd envision this process going forward. So we'd have a subdivision that would come in and want to, or or not somebody that we want to incorporate into the public domain. And we'd have staff go look at the deficiencies and what the problems are. And at that point, I don't think the staff is going to say, we deny you or you're approved. We're going to say, here's your conditional letter. These are the items. Even though we're saying this is an administrative element, the ordinance has a legislative element because we say in there that the council could pay for that deficiency. And if you pay for that, then the the group doesn't have to. So if there is a deficiency that we fill promotes or creates a public hazard, um the council could say, we will come up with that funding. And then that list that the staff came up, the administrative group, that comes off the list because now it has been, we just don't want to give something to the council that incurs a cost
Right.
in a surprise manner. And so I think um the purpose of making this list, going through it, and I I don't think you're going to see surprises. I don't think, I think there's a worst parade of horribles that could come out of this. But as I've talked to staff, if I, as I've looked at this subdivision, this particular one, the Quail Valley, I think there's going to be the list of items that they need to repair to bring it up to to a s- the standard we need it to meet. And um it's going to be doable. Um and I don't think we're going to see the council having to come up with funds. Certainly, that's a council discretion, but I think the HOA seems to be aware of what we're asking at this point. And it shouldn't be surprising. And it will be interesting to see um application number two and how how that goes through and how smooth that just rocks through with this ordinance.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I I just wanted to agree with that and say um this was really intent, this was intentionally drafted to be an interactive process, right? It wasn't, in fact, it reminds, as I say that, it reminds me a little bit of the ADA uh uh Interactive Process for Reasonable Accommodations, right? I mean, the city passes rules about how you can use land in the city and houses and 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 other things. And the American Disabilities Act requires us to allow people to come to the city and say, but I have a disability that prevents me that rule from being reasonable. I want you to grant me a reasonable accommodation. And what the law requires is that the city representative and the person then engage in a dialogue back and forth where the person says, where the city, this person says, well, here's what I think is reasonable. Here's what I want the city to allow me to do. And the city says, well, we think that's unreasonable, but what if you were able to do this instead, right? And you go back and forth until you come to a resolution or until you can't agree. This is, it was, this was designed in the same manner, not for you to submit an application, get rejected and try to decide and then have to decide whether you want to go to court over it or not, right? It's designed to, you come to the city, you say, would like to be be to dedicate our private property to the city. City says, here's the problems we see with that. People say, great, we really, we really, really want it, so we're going to fix those and and be done. Or there's no way we can pay for those. What do we do now? And in which case, as Mr. Haight just said, it then actually comes to the council for the for the citizens to make that exact case that you're envisioning to the council and saying, it is of such benefit to the city for this property to be dedicated that you should appropriate the money to make the fixes necessary for us to be dedicated. And the council then makes that decision about whether that's the right, whether that's the right process or not. And if the money's there, and so again, remember, there's three parts to that standard. It's meet standards or have funding to meet standards, one of, one of the ways of which is to have that be done by the council. or have funding to meet standards, one of, one of the ways of which is to have that be done by the council or to meet the key objectives of the standards. Well, um, go ahead, Mr. Fillmore.
I have a question for Mr. Jones. Is there anything at all in the ordinance that could be interpreted to preclude a hybrid funding mechanism?
No.
Okay. City and HOA.
No, uh, C, um, it specifically talks about, um, uh, there's, there's matching funding that could be requested from the city through different, um, programs. There's specific mention of, uh, other funding mechanisms such as special assessment areas and CDBG uh, or capital or CIP funds and any combination of those could be used. The only thing that's required is, uh, in that three-pronged test that I just mentioned was meet the standards, have the funding wherever it's coming from or whatever combination of sources it's coming from, or meet the key objectives.
So could you even do a special district for?
Yes, uh, well, um, did you say something, Bill? Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, we specifically mentioned special assessment area programs in, in the, uh, in the ordinance, but the, the applicants could, you know, and again, the council actually approves most, most of those kinds of things like the special district. So the applicant could always come to the, to the council and ask for approval of any of those things, making the ca- very kind of case that councillor handling is envisioning.
Okay. And so is it your view still from our conversation this morning that if we entertain this supplemental language that this particular HOA has suggested, that that would create ambiguities or contradictions within the ordinance that would be make it awkward to enforce, or do you still, or do you think that still might be a viable addition?
I, I don't think it creates ambiguities or contradictions. I think it changes the standard. And, and the, and trying to, and I'll step back and say, if the council wants to change the standard, that's the council's prerogative, and I fully recognize that. I'm just trying to represent the, the position of the committee, and I think, and, and they can and should speak for themselves if I say anything wrong, but I think, I think the recommendation of the committee is having a high standard with discretion to lower it is better than starting with a low standard.
Uh, that makes some sense. I guess my, my concern is fairness. And I think what they're trying to get at with this mandatory proposal uh, is fairness, where they're saying the street surface features and/or utilities were reasonably designed and are similar in condition to city maintained street surfaces uh, and/or utilities of similar age. There was to be treated the same as, as similarly situated streets in the city.
And, and I understand that as an argument, uh, you know, the committee considered that, and I'm sure Mr. Haight can speak to this more intelligently than I can. I think one of the things that we came up with and was, we discussed this in the committee was just that on its, on its surface, that seems very fair, but one of the differences is, um, that that, um, those standards that it, the, the public street that was built to those standards 40 years ago has since been maintained, monitored, and, uh, and and adapted and modified by the city as things have evolved. But the private street built to those standards four years, uh, years, years ago hasn't. And so it seems to me that to the degree that you're introducing that, that language introduces a contradiction, it introduces a contradiction that under that standard, you could be saying they ought to be allowed in for meeting those old standards, even if the key objectives of the current standards are not being met. Well, that seems to me to be, um, not desirable.
Now, I guess the argument they would make is that their language says it's in similar condition today as public streets have been maintained.
And, and as we discussed in the committee, my biggest problem about that is I think that's a huge enforcement nightmare. I, I think that then requires the engineering group to go out and try to conduct an analysis of what the condition of all the similarly aged streets are and try to compare it to this particular street and then engage in some kind of, uh, uh, analysis that then may be subject to court review about whether they agree that it actually is in similar condition or not. Rather than focusing on the question of, are the objectives being met?
So your preference from a legal drafting position would be to leave that fairness argument to be just that, an argument to make in their petition as opposed to complicating the ordinance?
Yes. Mr. Haight, I, you were leaning forward a couple of times. Did you want to say something to all of that? I don't want to steal your thunder.
Forward, but, um, I think the fairness issue is what you're hitting at. And, um, I've been a city employee forever, and when I talk to Mayor Kafusi, this administration wants us to be nice and be good. And so I think we're going to be a benevolent city and look at ways to help residents. And so I think, uh, that's going to be our goal with this group. We're going to, we're going to be fair with the city, make sure we're dealing with the taxpayer dollars, make sure we manage that correctly. But this isn't a way to find a no, we're finding a yes out of how to make this work for everybody. I think, um, you know, we'll look at a road that was built similarly and maybe it has a six-inch water line, but we know the upgrade is required to meet standards eight inch, but we haven't replaced all ours yet. So we can accept it because we know it still accomplishes the goal, but over time, we plan to replace them all. But be, just, we know that that can be done over time and we will do that as part of our overall maintenance. We're not expect, but if there's a roadside hazard that has changed and the clear zone isn't being met, they need to come back and fix that because we had to do it in our own subdivisions to meet those over the last 20 years or 30 years as those kind of things went on.
I think those words will be very well received by the HOA.
All right.
Any additional questions before we go to public comment? Okay, um, let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. I know we have Daniel Snow on the line who would like to make a comment. Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh, council, thank you so much for your engagement on this and, uh, CRC and Public Works. We're really grateful. I'm a homeowner in the HOA in question here. I take you, and we're so grateful for the positive, uh, engagement. We've had the good signals. I take you at your word that the intent of this ordinance to get to, is to get to a yes. I think our, our only, uh, concern is that, um, i- if we wake up a year from now and, um, we, we've engaged in the process the way the ordinance is written and, uh, someone, you know, I'm, I'm sure no one here, but someone in the, in, in the, uh, Public Works on the CRC decides to go and, you know, with a a spray paint can identify every single little problem in our neighborhood, they could make this a multimillion dollar, uh, dedication. And if you did the same thing in, in any other street in Oak Hills or Indian Hills or the Tree Streets or Edgemont, you'd be able to do the same thing and those are city, uh, city-owned assets. So I, I guess we're, we're looking for a safety valve that gets the, our elected representatives into this conversation. Because my reading of it right now is that the appeals process is just if there's been some kind of a procedural unfairness or some, something like that. But, but as it's written, there's enough, uh, discretion to, to, uh, probably exclude anything, including a city-owned street right now. And, um, and we don't see a path through that. Again, I, I think everyone's acting in good faith here and we hope things would go well. But, uh, it, if, if, uh, you know, someone changes their mind, it's not clear to us how we'd address that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in and, and being patient there. Any additional comments online or in person? Okay, um, we'll bring it back to council discussion. Mr. Jones?
Maybe I, maybe I'm just repeating myself, but as I listened to that comment, I just wanted to reiterate that because of what I just described about the interactive process, there is always a safety valve for the applicants to get in front of the council, right? Because they always have the option under this process to say, we are not going to do what you asked us to do, so let us go ask the council to pay for it. And when they get in front of the council to ask you to pay for it, you have the option of appropriating the money, expressing to the, to the CR, to the, to the staff people that are presenting that you can't believe how unreasonable they're being, or deciding that because of what you've heard that you need to amend the ordinance, right, and change the standards. So at the end of the day, this, this is not going to be something that happens in a back room and you're never going to hear about it again without any, without any ability to ensure that it's being carried out in a fair way, if that makes sense.
Any other comments? Discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I actually think we might find at some point that we've got a few HOAs lining up to ask us for money. And, uh, we, you know, I'm, I'm already inclined to start thinking through like how we potentially think about the ordinance in a different way so that it doesn't come as often as I think it might. I, I, I guess I'm hopeful that it doesn't happen that way. I'm just already thinking like if I'm an HOA and I don't have, I'm not up to code and, you know, my, my friend is on the council, let me just go, let's, let's go try, you know, our best shot at asking the council for money and see if that works. And, um, so I'm, I'm hopeful that's not the case, but I'm already, I'm already thinking through like, okay, I, I don't really want to open that door very wide to every HOA to, to come and present to the council. I want there to be an option for somebody to appeal the CRC. I think that's a smart thing to do, but I, I don't want it to become something where they come to us first because it's easier. Uh, or a potential to be easier.
Actually, we'll go to Ms. Ellsworth. I think she had her hand up first.
Yeah, to Mr. Shipley's point, I, I agree with a lot of what he said, and I think that this is, is in some ways, maybe it's not a pilot, but it is the first version of this. And so, um, we might get into a spot where we say, hey, X, Y, or Z isn't working and we need to update that in the ordinance. Or citizens might say that A, B, and C aren't working and we need to update that in the ordinance, but we won't know until we've uh, done some trial and error.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, in response to Mr. Shipley's, uh, concerns, I mean, maybe the biggest disincentive is that asking the city council to spend money, taxpayer money is always going to be a hard ask anyway, um, although, uh, I do like that that's an option as Mr. Jones was explaining. I'm pretty satisfied after this afternoon's discussion and tonight's discussion that, um, the draft as, as it's been put together allows, um, enough flexibility on both sides, um, to, to be something I could support, um, um, with, with the understanding that we will, uh, I think has been implied in the last several comments. You know, watch it and make sure that it's serving the purposes it is supposed to serve, and if not, then we, we would revisit it. But I'm, I'm comfortable, um, voting for this tonight.
If I might, I'd like to ask Mr. Haight and Mr. Pepperoni a question. Going forward, given the fact that we have apparently a few thousand HOAs in the city, what would be your recommendation with respect to, uh, prohibiting future HOAs from being approved unless the public facilities, the roads, the utilities are dedicated to the city right from the beginning?
Uh, well, first of all, because of engineering's position that private roads have to be built to public standard, I think that solves a lot of this issue. It's not very often that we get to, uh, ask for private roads. We do have one coming up, um, that's been proposed or suggested because they intend to gate the road and they want it to be an exclusive neighborhood. But even then, they're going to be told, we understand you want to be private, you have to build it to our current standards. Um, and if the city at some point in the future needs to take that over or wants to take it over, the gate would have to come down. But I think a lot of it is taken care of by engineering standards that you have to build city streets, even if they're going to be private. Does that answer your question? Right. That's right. That's why engineering took that position many years ago. They were afraid of this scenario where the city may be asked to take over these private assets, so they just said, let's build them all to the same standard so we don't have to have that debate sometime in the future.
One of the mics isn't on.
I believe your mic's off. Yeah, keep going. I wasn't stopping you.
I'm sorry.
I could hear you just fine. Well, maybe just restate quickly what you were saying so that those online could hear.
Excuse me. So for the record, I was just asking about whether or not it made more sense from a public policy perspective, as well as just the pragmatics, to maybe prohibit private roads, private utilities in the future. Uh, Mr. Pepperoni has explained that this ordinance addresses that issue. First, a new, new HOA would have to build to city standards. And secondly, we're putting them on notice with the, the proposed ordinance. That's what they would face down the road if they ever want to convert. Fair summary? Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Oh, Ms. Ellsworth, go ahead, and then we'll go to, uh, Mrs. Whipple.
I just thought of a question I have, um, and it's probably really straightforward. Is there any concern that we should have for, uh, development that has a public infrastructure district or a PID uh, being transferred to public ownership? Is that, does that conflict or complicate this in some way?
It's a good question that I don't know the answer to. Um, anybody else?
I'm sorry, if there's a bond on infrastructure, it wouldn't really make, on private infrastructure, it wouldn't make sense for us to, to take it.
I, I think from what, from most of the bonds I'm aware of, and even in PID, they can dedicate the, the, uh, the infrastructure to the city. In fact, I think with a PID, they're required to. Um, and so we get it, but we don't get the debt with it. The debt goes with the private property and they have to pay the taxes. So it's not a, they may still be paying bonds or whatever for the infrastructure, but we get it debt-free. And if they default, it goes to their property and their property takes the hit. So it wouldn't be a, somebody reclaiming or taking back city infrastructure.
But the, I mean, keep working through this with me. The medical school has a PID, right? And I think that's all private property. They wouldn't be able to dedicate any of that to the city.
My understanding was PID was for public infrastructure only, but it may be different. I am not familiar enough with PIDs, but I was understanding they could only use the money to build something they gave to us. But, or to the pub, to like power company or to, I don't know if anybody wants, we can give more back to you on that, but I believe it's a PID can only do public infrastructure. That's what I'm, my belief is.
Okay. There's probably some nuance I don't have there.
And, and they may have some private stuff, but they funded that another way likely, and they may have drawn a line that the PID people agreed to.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Parker popped up online. Was he going to comment on that?
Uh, Mr. Cherry, or KFI comment briefly?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
So yes, the public infrastructure district that was used for the medical school does require that the eventual ownership of the, uh, infrastructure come to the city. So it's being used for roads, sewer lines, curb gutter and sidewalk, um, other underground utilities. Um, and so, yeah, those will eventually be publicly owned infrastructure.
Thank you, Ms. Whipple. Mrs. Whipple?
Thank you. Um, so we discussed this some in the work meeting. I, I like that there is some flexibility and discretion when that is built into the code. I think it's important to recognize that by taking on a private street or other infrastructure, the city is accepting liability and responsibility for the cost of ongoing maintenance and for any changes that need to be made immediately. So it's useful for there to be a mechanism for the city to look at what those costs will be, to look at how it's been maintained, um, instead of being forced to automatically take something that's offered. I, I don't like the idea of referring back to the code at the time that a street was built, partly because that involves historical research and it doesn't take into account, um, that ongoing maintenance, how the HOA has used its reserve fund to maintain those shared, how the HOA has used its reserve fund to maintain those shared, um, assets of the HOA. So I'm in favor of the ordinance as it is written now.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll go ahead and we will call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? Um, Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Mrs. Whipple?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous. Thank you. Again, item eight's been continued at the, uh, request of the applicant. Item nine, in ordinance amending Provo City Code Sections 14.17D, Point 020 and 040, and 14.34, Point 296, to make changes to the airport zone permitted uses and minor lot and design standards requirements. Says citywide application, um, and this will be presented by Javin Weaver, planner. Welcome, Javin.
Thank you. So as staff started to work with these zones, we realized there were a couple of things that needed to be corrected for this. Go to the next slide, please. So in the, uh, purposes and objectives, it discusses, um, a good, uh, amount about the, uh, types of uses within the airport zones that would be allowed. And so we didn't see that the text products for air cargo was necessary because it was already covered. And the yard requirements, uh, we are allowing, um, uh, parking in the front yard within this area. If we think of, um, this parking can be between the yard and the building in that area. Um, there still will be a, uh, a front yard. It would just be 10 feet within that area. And John, John, I'm not sure that this is the right presentation, but I emailed you. Sorry. Well, he's looking for that. Um, the last thing, um, so staff took this upon commission. They had a couple, uh, recommendations. Uh, one with the, uh, design standards, uh, staff, they recommended that we looked at the, uh, materials and looked at the permitted uses to see, um, what would be required for some uses rather than others. So the only thing that we changed on that was discussing that, um, uh, metal composite material would be allowed on, um, air cargo material, uh, air cargo terminal, uh, facilities, aircraft maintenance facilities, um, manufacturing and bird housing. So if you remember, and I apologize if I don't have a picture of it, uh, the, uh, hangar that I showed when we was on the airport, that really nice hangar, that has that, uh, metal composite material. So that's what we would be allowing within the airport industrial zone.
Is that the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. I do have a question.
Sure.
I need you to explain to me what you just said. I'm, I'm struggling to understand the practical implications here of what's changing.
Sure. Um, so the yard requirement says, uh, minimum 10 foot, maximum 20 foot. And then the building wouldn't need to be there, but with removing that maximum yard requirement, it allows for parking to be in the front yard of a building within the airport industrial zone.
Hmm.
Does that make sense?
And that's the primary change that's being made?
Yes. Uh, with the, uh, permitted land uses, the only thing that we're doing is striking out products for air cargo because the purposes and objectives, um, satisfies that and already discusses, um, that uh, uses within this area should relate to the airport.
Hmm.
And the only change and the development standards relates to the materials and that the, uh, metal composite material would be allowed on certain permitted uses within that zone.
Okay. Thank you. Um, what other questions do we have? I'm the only one here who didn't get it, huh? All right.
I blame the face mask.
Um, I guess, uh, we do need to open this item up for public comment. Thank you, Javin. So we'll go ahead and do that now. Anybody here to talk about this exciting, uh, agenda item regarding parking lot and the airport zone? No? Okay. Online?
None online.
Surprised. All right. Um, bring it back for council discussion. Looks like there's no council discussion, so we will go ahead and call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? Online, Mrs. Whipple?
Uh, yes.
And Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
All right, that vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, this is the last item. On the agenda will be reviewing Provo City General Plan, Part One of Three. Uh, just for everyone's benefit who might be watching online or here in person. We did discuss this in work meeting, uh, pretty significant amount of time. So might be beneficial to go back if you are interested in this item to go back and watch that discussion. You'll get a lot of good content there. Um, Hannah, is she back? She's back. Hannah Salzle will be, planner will be presenting this item. Um, so take it away, Hannah.
Thanks. Malia, do you have that slideshow? I will keep my portion very brief since the entire purpose of tonight is to hear input from the public. I just wanted to give the public a very brief overview that might be able to preemptively answer some questions that we've been getting pretty frequently. Here's, as always, always start my presentations with this, where you can find the most recent version of the general plan in departments on the provo.org page, neighborhood services, planning, general plan. All the links are at the bottom of the page and they will always be the most up-to-date version. You don't have to worry. If you're going to this page, you're looking at the right version. Timeline, on the 18th, as, uh, Councilor Hovin said, they discussed part of the general plan in the work session. We'll have the public hearing. The public hearings, uh, even though we're discussing the work session, uh, general plan, uh, breakdown in thirds, the public hearings will be for the entire plan. Don't feel like you need to follow that same schedule of thirds. No. All good. Okay, great. Yeah, that looked like it was missing a slide. There is currently an open city hall survey that we would encourage the public to take with some targeted questions. There was an open city hall survey earlier, so make sure you're looking at the one that is active. It should currently be the top link or among the top links as others are added in the coming weeks. This will close on July 31st, so make sure you get your comments in before then. Uh, on the February 1st and February 15th, there will be other public hearings. Um, on January 25th, just wanted to make sure everybody gets this as signal blasted as possible. We're putting this in every venue we can. There will be a conversations with KFUCI, uh, at 6:00 PM immediately followed until 7:00 PM or 7:00 PM with a Q and A for the planners. This is not public input. If you have input as a member of the public, please email your counselor, come to one of the remaining public hearings, take the open city hall survey. This is an opportunity for the public to ask questions of Melissa and me and one of the consultants who wrote the plan to better understand, better inform. We get, there was a lot of this process that wasn't entirely public and we're happy to answer any questions that the public might have. One of the questions that we've gotten is why the neighborhoods weren't involved more in the creation of this general plan. And the answer simply is that it was a citywide document. It was always intended to be citywide. And in seeking input, we tried to keep it at that level. So all of our outreach has been at a citywide level, not targeted to neighborhoods specifically. As you can see, the general plan is up here, the most broad citywide visioning document a city has. As we get down into master plans and especially in area plans, we will absolutely be working with the neighborhoods involved in those plans through the neighborhood organization. This is the slightly expanded version of the public input process that we've gone through so far. Uh, everything in orange was a public input phase. Everything in blue is something the staff or consultants have done. As you can see, it begins and ends with public hearing processes. We tried to build everything that we drafted on input from the public and then continue to take it back to the public as we thought appropriate for the phase of the general plan to continue to refine it until here we are now in the open city hall and council process and public hearing phases.
Ms. Salzle?
Yeah.
Ms. Ellsworth, Ellsworth did ask to cover, for you all to cover, maybe, um, what did she say? The, the, kind of the history of public input over the last year and a half on this process? I, I guess, Ms. Ellsworth, does this cover this for you or were you looking for something more?
Yeah, I just think that, um, the more depth and the more explanation that we have on the public input process over 18 months is really valuable because this wasn't, this wasn't shaped by one contingency, right? It wasn't shaped by a couple of people's opinions. I mean, there, there was a really much broader process. And so I think illuminating that is helpful for future conversations and for context in every conversation.
Yes, it's true. The council has received a memo of the full public input process. We would be happy to share pieces of that with the public if members of the public have more specific questions. It's true, this was as citywide as we could make it. We've reached out in blog posts from the mayor, from the council, on Facebook, on Instagram, every venue that we had as staff. We have used to reach out to the public for the last year and a half. Especially during a pandemic, it was difficult to get people engaged. Uh, when people are talking about schools being in session and mask mandates, asking people about the general plan and bike trails really probably wasn't a top priority for a lot of people. We understand that. We've tried to overcome that by taking lots of different approaches, by using open houses, by putting out surveys, by having open city halls, by having working groups. Um, and where we felt like there was maybe an over-representation from certain groups, we have tried to be very transparent about that in Appendix B of the general plan. Yeah.
I just wanted to add one more, um, comment to that effect. Our previous general plan, um, went through a very different kind of, uh, uh, construction process. Uh, you know, both probably have their merits, but the, the, what, what I recall, I was part of a, I think Mayor Curtis created a bunch of subcommittees to write each of the chapters. So there were lots and lots of authors and, um, it, it was very involved in terms of, uh, that the input process. But I think it also suffered for being sprawled out all over the place. It had lots of contradictions that never got resolved, lots of redundancies that never got resolved. And consequently, the document was not as, um, workable, functional as, as would have been ideal. So I mean, there's, um, you know, when, when we made the decision on the past council to conscript a, um, an external, uh, professional consultancy to help us with this, the idea was to expedite the process a little bit more, not, not hopefully at the expense, obviously, of public input. Um, but at least in terms of the writing of the document and the creation of the document based on input. Um, I think we, we did sort of offload that, um, to help make it happen a little more quickly. Um, so this particular phase is, um, valuable and, you know, I'm repeating what all of us on the council know, but we, we agreed to extend this process to get more public feedback on this because we want it. Um, uh, but that, that's maybe something that was somewhat different from the last time the general, the general plan was, was written for Provo.
Yes, and the consultants that we've worked with have worked with counties and cities and other communities across the country, especially in the West. And they say that this is more public input and more of a robust public process than they have done for their other plans. This is an atypical amount, but Provo residents care a lot and we're happy to make sure their voices are heard.
Of course, I, I had made some assumptions about how the, what the so-called working groups or advisory groups, I've made some assumptions about who appointed them or how they were appointed. And I've just found out that my assumptions were wrong. What was the process of populating these working groups?
Um, Melissa, maybe if you'd like to answer that, that was before my time joining this team. I joined when the working groups were about halfway through.
Yeah, so those, um, those working groups were put together by Robert Mills. Um, and I'm not sure how he, um, what process he used. I just know that he tried to, um, get a variety of, um, representation across the city, um, but I'm not sure. I can't speak to his exact method.
That was Robert's decision.
It was, it was Mr. Mills, yes.
I can speak to part of that as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Ellsworth.
Yeah, I, I won't speak to the working groups, but I will speak to the steering committee. And I know that Robert put a lot of effort into kind of handpicking the steering committee so that it was geographically representative, so that it was, uh, representative of ages, of socioeconomic profiles where possible. Um, there, you know, was some consideration of, uh, race and ethnicity, really trying to bring in a representative sample and not just, uh, the, you know, the, what do they call it? The 10 people that always volunteer, if you will. Um, so there was a tremendous transect of the city on, on the steering committee.
Having worked on Robert, or worked with Robert on compiling other working groups for other projects, that sounds like the process we went through. We identified, um, starting not with people, but with roles and locations, who from the business community would be a good liaison. We need a student. We need people to represent different ethnic minority groups. We need people representing women and men and different areas of the city. So that's probably the process he went through.
Uh, Cliff had a question or a comment?
So, um, we've sent this to you previously, but Karen a while back compiled for you, uh, in an email, a memo about, um, what the general plan outreach has been, uh, for 2021. And it runs on, uh, several pages, uh, where it talks about the timing of the working groups, the focus groups, um, the general public outreaches. I mean, we started with a community workshop, a storytelling exercise back in December a year ago. Um, we've had, um, a workshop on recommendations back in April. There's been the educational outreach. Uh, we've had multiple presentations to the council. The working groups got started back in January of this year, of last year, '21. Um, with, uh, introduction of the project, a vision statement meeting and a supplemental meeting on, uh, on some refinement of some of the issues to go into general plan. So there's been lots and lots and lots of outreach and that document is, is in your inboxes again. And, um, we'll go ahead and put that in the agenda, uh, materials for today's meeting. If anybody watching wants to go back and see what the council has done on that and, and you'll find that it's been a fairly extensive, uh, robust process.
Great. And that memo was very detailed down to the topics that were discussed at the working groups and how often they met. Any more questions or comments on public input? Okay. Uh, come on. Uh, here we go. I just wanted to briefly summarize some of the feedback that we have heard from the public before to reassure the council and most especially the public that we are getting passed on, uh, what has been sent to the counselors and administration and we are accommodating them to the best of our ability. Uh, we've heard a lot about, uh, neighborhood involvement in the process. I already addressed that with where it was appropriate, um, for certain plans. But we've also been pushing out the, uh, open city hall survey through the neighborhood program to better utilize this neighborhood resource to help us get feedback again at a citywide level. But the neighborhoods are always incredibly useful, no matter what level we're engaging with. Um, equity was a concern we heard from a couple of residents and that has been removed from the document. It still appears accidentally on one page where we, it was in a text box. We didn't notice it. It will be removed in the next version. Um, mentions of neighborhoods, especially single-family neighborhoods. We've added more throughout the housing chapters and the growing together chapters. But specifically, we added a But specifically, we added it to the top three housing strategies. Number three is now recognize the value of single family neighborhoods. And we gave it its own single family housing paragraph on how it is a valuable mix to the city and why it contributes to a better balance. Um, rather than exclusively focusing, I, I think we kind of take single family neighborhoods as the assumed default or a little bit for granted. But it was important for us to highlight why those matter and how we're working to get that balance. Um, we've also heard a couple of people suggest we separate BYU students from Provo statistics as far as population, especially income goes. That sadly is simply not possible. We use aggregated census data and it doesn't break out whether students were uh whether the person contributing was a student or not. Um, also BYU students are part of our community and our city. And this plan is as much for them and the development of the areas that they'll use as it is for the rest of the city. So even if it were possible, I'm not sure it's the best track. And again, just highlighting further opportunities for public input. We really want to hear from the public as much as possible in these phases. January 25th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM on Zoom. There's that conversations with Kufusi and Q and A with the planners. And please make sure to take that open city hall survey before it closes on January 31st. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, what other questions do we have for Hannah? Mrs. Salzle. Um, go ahead.
Um, we discussed this a bit at the work meeting afterwards. We realized we should have discussed, I guess, that um, the diversity and inclusionary advisory. We just need to know what that is and what
Hmm.
before we're, you know, like, we need a better understanding of what the goal is of that. Yeah, it's a pretty standard committee. Um, the Governor Cox has one, almost every state does. Most, all major cities and most, an increasing number of smaller cities have one. All of the local universities have one, even SKE Utah, I found out as I was doing some background research has one. It's uh simply a committee that meets to review how the city can be more inclusive and get more public feedback and public input and participation, especially from those demographics who might not be reached, looking specifically at um people who might not speak English, how better to, they can, or how to better help them engage with the city's process, looking at things like meeting times, accessibility, like what we're doing on Zoom has helped a lot of people participate in these meetings who might not otherwise be able to. That's the sort of work those committees would do. Just furthering transparency and accessibility for government.
So, Mrs. McKay, are you saying we need to have a discussion about that? Is that sufficient context for you of where it came from or?
I was just curious what the goal was, what, like, is there a budget behind it? It's making another department? Is it just a committee like the ones that we worked on today?
It would be a committee like the ones we formed or assigned council members to today?
Yes, it would be a committee that would then make policy recommendations or administrative recommendations depending on the topic they're addressing. Um, I don't foresee them having any budget, but we haven't gotten into the details of the creation of this committee yet, so.
So that would be a creature of the city council, not appointed by the mayor?
Uh, that's to be determined. Yeah.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Salzle. So the primary intent of this uh, of this hearing today was to give members of the community an opportunity to provide feedback directly to us. Um, so we'll go ahead and we'll open this up for public comment first. Anybody here in the audience to comment about the general plan? Come on up. Yeah, so you'll have two minutes. Um, I don't know, staff, if you'll be uh putting up a timer.
Each one of us only have two minutes.
Yes, you each have two minutes. That's typical.
Just checking. How are you tonight?
Yeah, if, if everybody goes, we might be here a while, so we might have to trim that down, right?
Could we, uh, while I'm talking, could we pull up the map of the general plan that's on page, I think, 19?
I'm sure we can. Can you state your name and?
I'm Dave Lewis.
Dave Lewis in City Provo?
Uh, City Provo.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
Uh, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that I saw that I like. So I liked the, the welcoming community and item number two to expand the services to West Provo. I thought that was uh good to highlight. I liked uh goals and strategies, stewardship of the outdoors, the uh number four, all dealing with parks, trails, uh benches, walkways, uh the space amenities, the parks. I really like uh, I try and ride on the trails and I love what we're doing with the trails here in Provo. Um, and then specifically on, is this page 19? Uh, sorry.
Yeah, they're on 19 and 20 here.
So go to, go to 36 then. They number differently when you print and read them online. Okay, right there. So I just had a couple of suggestions. Obviously, uh wanting to highlight wherever we have transportation hubs or if there's a bus stop, we ought to be uh clustered around affordable housing or um mixed use. And then one, I don't know if I'm, okay, so right here in, this is uh 820 North right here, I-15 Geneva Road. The only thing that I would uh suggest or like to highlight is, so this is mixed use right here. Um, and maybe mixed use is the wrong thing to highlight, but this area right here where there are train tracks, freeway, um heavy uh Geneva Road. Maybe it's higher density, I guess, is what I would highlight, maybe not so much mixed use, but I, I also want to highlight right here, this corner, Center Street and Geneva Road. So there's a, actually, um on that corner, there's a 7-Eleven gas station and then south of it is a um fire station and then twin homes. And so mixed use area in there, this is general plan on the zoning, I believe that's how it, how um it is. I guess my only suggestion is I don't think in the zoning uh it is we already have um twin homes and other things there. I, I guess I'd like to highlight that corner. And then we've actually submitted.
Uh, you are out of time, but I think given the fact that there's not a ton of people
Okay.
uh to comment, we'll give you another minute.
Just one more comment.
Yeah. So, but, but what were you saying about that? I, I didn't really grasp fully what
I wasn't.
You were saying mixed use wasn't really appropriate for that area or?
No, I think that should be mixed use. What I wanted to highlight is in the past, um general plan and now this general plan, it's highlighted as mixed use. And so we're hopeful, that's actually an area that we're working on a project that we've submitted to the city. And it is a mixed use. And so we're hopeful as we go through the process that I'm basically trusting um that kind of an invitation to say, yeah, submit a, a mixed use proposal in that area, obvious. So we're on the southwest corner of Geneva and um Center Street and we're hopeful that on the northeast corner that Smiths comes. But then we're trying to do our part on the southwest corner. So, so uh I guess what I'm saying is the general plan shows mixed use. We're proposing a mixed use and we're hopeful as we go through the process that that's um have a fair opportunity to present. Um, you know, the invitation to say general uh mixed use and so that's where we're submitting. So specifically in that area right there, I, I, I'll take time in the future. I don't have enough time right now to clarify what I was saying about what is there existing and what's, what's in the zone and mixed use. And then I guess the only other comment I was going to make is just there ought to be a little bit more consideration in that, that area, either for higher density or mixed use where we have trains, freeway, um, other um other things in that area. That's, that's my comment. Yeah, I don't know if you have any questions or thanks for letting me make my comment.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you coming out.
Yeah.
Provide feedback. Thank you. Anyone else here in the chamber? Step right up and just let us know your name.
So I'm Andrew Lewis. I'm actually not related to Dave over there, but I do work with him. Um, can we go to the southwest future land use map? It's appendix J. Okay, um. Yeah, could you just look it up really fast? So I appreciate this opportunity. Um what we found is I'm, I've worked with the, the neighborhood as well as the city ca- uh the planners. And so we've taken in their feedback and kind of tried to um build our development towards the future land use map. However, we found that there's a I guess, a mix-up between what the planners want to see and what the neighborhood is suggesting that they would like to see. If we could just, if she does pull up the map, um, I can kind of specify a little better.
I'd be curious to maybe ask staff, so once we adopt a general plan, something like the southwest feature land use map, will that be superseded, still be something that we utilize? Um is this just provide, does this just provide more detail? What if there are areas that conflict? Just curious. Thank you.
Wonderful. Could we just zoom in right there on the intersection of Center Street and Geneva Road? Uh, it's a village center commercial mixed use. So our understanding of this plan is that it should imply a variety of housing types. I'm not sure exactly what the um, maybe the planning center or the planning commission is meaning by a village center commission, uh village center commercial mixed use. But we assume it'd be something, say, like River Woods or somewhere that has a mix of shopping, retail and some of the grocery store. And then you combine that with a higher density of residential to buffer those uses. Um, our proposal that we've made um has received um tremendous uh good feedback from the neighborhood. They're all in favor of our um putting commercial right on the corner and then we have condominium building below that and then LDR and VLDR, just buffering our densities from the intersection. However, our comment from the planning commission has been that we should, sorry, from the planning department or has been that we should only put commercial on the corner and then a single family below that. So we're kind of at a, I'm sorry, we are at a um I guess, a visionary impasse where the neighborhood seems to be much more in favor of our proposal, but what the plant, what the planning department has told us, it does not meet the general plan, so we cannot, um, they will not support it. So we would, I think there's some room for more feedback, yes?
Yeah, so I'll just say, um, we're probably getting a little too specific for maybe the general plan feedback conversation that we're hoping to have tonight. But I'm sure that that, that this is something that will come before the council at some point and you'll have an opportunity to present and provide feedback. And um I just appreciate that you went and talked to the neighborhood and can, can offer some feedback there. But I think for to, for the purpose of tonight's meeting, we'll want to hold off on this conversation if that's all right.
Sure. Then I think my final comments would be that we'd appreciate, um, we have like the open city hall uh comments and it would be nice to be able to interact with the residents a little more. If we could respond or post our own comments to the um residents who have given us advice on our project, that would be.
Okay, maybe I'll refer you to um to this uh to Karen, who's not here, but she is watching remotely and she can connect you with those neighborhoods, those neighborhood chairs.
Oh.
If she hasn't done that already.
The chairs have already, oh, they've talked to us and they're all in support of our development, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. Anyone else in the chamber to comment on the general plan, provide some feedback, questions? Um, looks like there's nothing online. Cliff? So.
That is correct.
All right, then at this point, we'll close public comment. I think um I don't, so I, I guess what I would say is we did kind of rush through this item earlier today. That being said, you know, it is almost coming up on eight o'clock here. I don't want to tell anyone here that they can't make a comment. But I guess I would maybe ask, um, if anybody does want to make a comment that maybe it's something that wasn't touched on earlier in the meeting. Um, you know, something that they've been itching to say or, or, or that sort of thing. Otherwise, I think we all belabored this pretty good earlier. Yeah. Okay, so if there's no additional comments here from the council, um I guess at this point, there's no motion for this. So if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent? The magic words.